All right, good evening and welcome to this May 7th Board of Supervisors meeting. Apologize for our tardiness, we had an extended exec session meeting tonight. Before we get into the public meeting, we do have two interviews for boards and commissions. Our first one, Corey, are you here? Is Corey online? Maybe we'll have one. No one's online? All right. How about David Eisenberg, are you here? Come on up, please. If you could check your microphone too, to see if it's on. All right, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Understand that you're interested in participating in one of our advisory boards or committees.
That's right.
Or more than that. Typically how these go, we just allow you a couple of minutes to introduce yourself, tell us what you're interested in, why you're interested in it.
Yeah.
And then board members, if they have any questions, we'll ask you a couple of questions about what you'd like to do or your background, whatever suits them. And then, you know, we have a lot of people applying for these different types of roles, so it may be either later tonight or at a future meeting, once we've gone through some other interviews, we'll make some votes and appoint people to different boards and committees.
Okay, thank you so much.
So with that, take it away and tell us about yourself, please.
Well, as you mentioned, my name's David Eisenberg. I'm a fourth generation Philadelphian, I actually grew up in Montgomery County in Abington. My daughter and son-in-law and grandchildren have lived here for 15 years now. My wife and I have been in Arizona most recently and decided to move back as I start thinking about retirement. So two years ago, we moved back to Lower Mcfield Township. My interest, while my background is public safety and human service, my interests are broad. When we lived in Strasburg, PA, I served on the zoning commission. And so I'm actually more motivated to be of service than be slotted in any specific spot. So my hope is that if you think I can be helpful, I'll fit where you need me. I'm a lifelong learner and I like challenges, and so if there was something not related to my background, I still would likely be interested.
Understood. With that, I'll take it off to the board for questions. Do you have any?
Non-specific, thank you for applying and thanks for being flexible in whatever board we could use you in, it's appreciated, we don't often hear that, so.
Yes, well, thank you for taking the time with me.
Absolutely.
Shalom.
Yeah, along those lines, very appreciative that you're flexible and there's a lot of opportunity. Zoning hearing board, do you have experience in that?
Two years, yes, sir.
Two years, okay. And then...
Gosh, we have openings, a couple.
We have a lot of openings, right?
Yeah.
Do we have, oh, we do have one on HRC?
I don't think so.
HRC.
So, yeah.
It's possible.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have lots of opportunities, is what we're...
Okay.
If you had come a few months ago, we could have used your services, the social work, to help us, got the reading skills, but doing much better.
I'm always available, day or night.
Appreciate it. Did you have any?
Yeah, I was just wondering if historical architecture, Harb?
That, I mean, that would be a gift.
Okay.
That's...
Yeah.
I mean, this, I know the history here is amazing.
Yeah, that's one where we have a couple, and then we have vacancies on the disability advisory board, there's one vacancy there.
Okay.
Which, that's an interesting opportunity. Which, that's an interesting opportunity, so we've got a number of choices. You're okay with all of them, so, yeah, that's...
I really am.
As long as you haven't been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor, I'm like, and even then, depends on, no, I'm kidding. I think you're good, thank you.
Supervisor Blundy, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
With that, again, thank you for applying and, as you heard, we have a lot of openings and we have some more interviews coming up over the next few meetings, so we'll try and place people where...
Sounds good.
They might be happy.
I'll look forward to hearing.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good evening.
You too.
All right. And just to check, Corey has not made their way to...
No one.
No one online? Okay. So with that, we will call this meeting into order, and would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Go to the roll calls. Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
Supervisor Ross is not able to make the meeting this evening. Supervisor Lewis?
Present.
Supervisor McCartney?
Present.
And I am Supervisor Granier, so we have four members present. Community announcements. Reminder during this portion of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement or contact the township at admin@lmt.org to request a special announcement to be added to the agenda. Lower Makefield Township will be hosting a blood drive for the American Red Cross on Friday, May 16th, from noon to 5:00, in the public meeting room at the Township Building, right here. Sign up and/or to get more information, log onto redcrossblood.org, Red Cross Blood, all one word, and enter sponsor code LOWERMAKEFIELD, all one word, capital L, capital M. The Environmental Advisory Council is hosting their Styrofoam Collection event on Saturday, May 17th, from 10:00 AM to noon, again, right here at the Township Building, along with your clean white styrofoam. You can also bring natural quarks, clean pill bottles, the tops, and batteries, if you have any questions. Again, you can check out the calendar on our website at lmt.org or reach out to the township at admin@lmt.org. Lower Makefield Township's Environmental Advisory Council, with the participation of the Yardley Refillery, sponsoring a free microplastics lecture with Mike, apologies if I mispronounce your name, Wildbacker, a noted naturalist, on Saturday, May 31st, at 10:00 AM, at the Township Building, again, right here. On Sunday, June 1st, Amy's Kisses will be hosting their 11th annual Walk to Remember at Taylor State Park. This meaningful event raises awareness about domestic violence while inspiring change through education. Participants will take steps to create a future free from violence, staying together in remembrance and hope. Register by visiting amyskisses.org, that's A-M-Y-S-A-I-S-S-E-S.org. I also, I thought we had that on here before, I believe, May 10th, I see Joe there, we have, the Historic Commission will be hosting an event right here, the Township Building. What time, Joe?
10:5.
10:00 AM. So this is part of a larger study that the Township's doing. Back in February, we commissioned a consultant to do a historic resources study of township buildings. And this is the opportunity for members of the community to come and bring their information about historic homes to the Historic Commission to contribute, not only to that study, but to the work of the Historic Commission. Hopefully, we have a lot of old homes in this, in the township, that type of information sharing is the only way we can really get at the meat of what we have for resources. So it'd be appreciated for anyone that has an old home or just is interested in old homes, to please come to the Township Building on May 10th to meet with our Historic Commission, and we can use that information for a lot of stuff that we have upcoming. So I know the Historic Commission would appreciate it. I'm not your liaison, but I do follow what you guys are doing and it's good stuff. I believe we, a couple more items. Supervisor Blundy, you had to mention?
Yeah, I did want to give a shout out to some of the women at Pensbury High School. They formed a flag football team this year and went on to capture their first SOL championship, so good for them, really proud of all that's going on in our school. And also, maybe some of you were able to participate, but the young women of Troop 21669, which is mostly Quarry Hill 5th graders, did a wonderful project to support us as Bird Town and to support the natural habitat. So on Saturday, they showed me all the blue box, blue bird house boxes that they had put up at the Makefield Meeting House, which is where they meet. The girls were very proud that most of the houses had habitats, had occupants, I'll get this right one day. They were much more articulate than I am. It was really great to see them all working together. The project took over 20 hours of work, and they'll all be getting their bronze award as a result. So, thank you, young women, we really appreciate all that you do for our township and our birds.
Excellent. Any supervisors have any other announcements?
Nope.
All right. So that's item number four. Item number five, we've been having, it seems like every other meeting, we have recognition of someone who's put in a lot of time and service to the community who's retiring. This evening, we have another retiring police officer, Officer Steve Ferry. Officer Ferry started with the department on May 22nd, 1994, and his official retirement will be May 31st of this year, you know, end of this month, so that's 31 years of service to the community, which is amazing. Not only has he put in these 31 years of service, his family's put in these 31 years having his back and supporting him in our township. With that, Chief Kelly, if you'd like to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to present Officer Steve Ferry to you tonight. As you indicated, Officer Ferry has served faithfully for the last 31 years in Lower Makefield Township. Before joining our ranks, Officer Ferry is a proud graduate of Council Rock High School. He then attended Bucks County Community College and then received a Bachelor of Science degree from Penn State University. During his studies at Penn State, he interned with the Dolphin County District Attorney's Office, County Detectives Division, and was able to pursue his career in law enforcement. During his career here at the Lower Makefield Township Police Department, he has volunteered and gone above and beyond many times. He has served as a scout sniper with the South Central Emergency Response Team. Officer Ferry has also served as an acting detective, an acting corporal, and has been instrumental in serving as a Smith &amp; Wesson factory-trained armor, taking care of our handguns. He has served as a field training officer and probably most importantly, represented his brothers and sisters, serving as the president of the PBA. Officer Ferry is the recipient of numerous, and I mean numerous, I went through them today, commendations and letters of recognition from the community, to include a life-saving award and a UN accommodation, as well as two awards for a traffic Top Gun in 2009 and 2010. Officer Ferry is to my right, he is joined by his mom, his son Angelo, his wife Marcy, and his sister, and I present him to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
(laughter)
Not that anyone wants to hear me speak, but hey, what are you gonna do? thank you for lending him to us for all this time, and we hope that you can at least appreciate this small token of our gratitude for all your service. So with that, here you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause)
It's a candid shot, it's a candid shot.
Thank you, it was a great honor, greatly appreciated, my family, my brothers and sister back there, and especially to Chief Kelly for making this happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's been an honor.
Hey.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I told you he was tall. My neck hurts now.
Yes, that's...
Well, can't really top that, I wish we could just end the meeting right now, but we have, we do have some work to do.
The agenda gets larger.
Yes. Give everyone a minute here, but, no, I think it's, just from a board perspective, you know, it's very important to recognize folks that have given years and years of public service to the community, because we do appreciate it. I don't know that we've done enough of that over the years, but I think we're making a point of it now, to make sure these folks are recognized, whether the police department or any one of our staff that's put in so much time, but we definitely appreciate you and thank you.
(inaudible)
Thanks. All right. I will slowly move on to item number six, which is public comment on non-agenda items, and this is for comment on items that do not appear on the agenda. If you do have comment on something that is on the agenda, we ask that you wait till that item. Otherwise, standard protocol is to state your name, whether or not you're township president, and we ask that you keep comments to three minutes, so we can keep things moving.
Yes, yes, sir. My name is Haseeb Abdurrahman, and I am representative to Zubeta Foundation's CEO, Mutazar Azhar. In other words, I work for him. So I want to just take a couple of minutes, not beyond three minutes, to say, you know, I was riding on Big Oak Road coming out of Damaski today, and as I was leaving the Zubeta Foundation's premises, I passed by Charles Bay Middle School, and there were two officers on bikes, on their motorcycles. And they were standing there in front of the Charles Bay Middle School, as I would think the students were getting ready to exit with the conclusion of the day. And so when I saw the two officers, I stopped my car as I was going by Big Oak Road, and I said to them, "My name is Haseeb Abdurrahman, and I'm gonna give you all some kudos tonight", not knowing that I was gonna run into two of the officers who were here tonight, and I was so happy to see them out there, because it's representative of the work that the Lower Makefield Police Department continues to do. So I wanted to make mention of that. And also, there was a situation, I was looking at the news today, and there was a situation with regards to the, a few of the officers out of the New York State, or New York City Police Department, they were in a certain area, jumped by a slew of gang members. This is on national TV, this is on Fox News tonight. So this helps to make my point countless times, that the police, for the most part, are not appreciated throughout the country. Here we have, again, police officers giving, putting their life on the line for, at the sake of what they do in the particular community that they represent. So, you know, unfortunately, well, fortunately, there was no injuries, no severe injuries, and this is all over the Fox News, you turn on the news or probably on CNN right now. And I wanted to also, this is Detective Sergeant Brian Umlor, Deputy Chief of Police Robert Lewis, Sergeant Larry Hickman, Sergeant Tim Reeves, last but not least, Joseph D. Kelly, the Third Chief of Police. They should get kudos, endless kudos. And a part of the chief staff, Jennifer Walker, who is the assistant to the Chief of Police, she's also the office manager, along with her assistant, whose name is Carol. So far too often, the rank and file police don't get any kind of credit that they should get, and it's the same with the office workers, people who work in the office, people who help put together whatever the chief needs in his administrative office to make things run smooth as well as can be. And, you know, and going in there, speaking with Jennifer, I didn't even know, I mean, she was so busy, you know, busybody, busybody, getting the work done for the sake of our community, the Lower Makefield Township. And also, I want to make mention, yesterday I went in to get a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, and administrative office, Katie McVan, if I'm saying her name right, and Dan McLoo. I hope I didn't misspell...
You got them all right.
Yeah, M-C-L-O-O, I'm trying to make it out. And also, if you remember, I was here last month, and I may have mentioned about the lighting, Mr. Derek Fitcher. Is he here?
Fuller.
Derek Fuller, yep. Yep.
Am I saying the name right?
Fuller.
Fuller, okay. I mean, took care of that matter expeditiously, sent me a nice letter, I appreciate the letter, but I wanted to give kudos out to him for the speed in which that was taken care of, because the lighting is an issue, but it's no longer, thanks to his department and the work that they have done to clarify or to clear up the Big Oak and make it much more lighter than it needs to be. And we at Zeta Foundation would do our part on our premises, because it's far darker on our premises, and we have to, you know, bring forth more light to our community. So again, I just want to give, you know, thanks and appreciation to them, and also, in closing out, I just want to give my thanks and appreciation to all of you that sit before this body, and for those who came before this body before you. I've been here before, years ago, and you do endless work, and I believe too, that you all don't get the recognition, regardless of whether you get a salary or not, you work in at the behest of the community, and I think it's very, I think it's an honorable thing. And so I'm honored to be coming here and speaking before you, and also I saw on the agenda here, Mr. Lewis, I know you have, as a part of one of your committees, a Human Relations Committee, so do I need to call into your office to get additional information on that commission?
No, you can ask questions. We actually had our first meeting after training last week, so if you're interested, there, I believe there might be one opening, so we would definitely welcome applications if you're interested.
I am interested, so I need to see you or come to...
No, actually, all you need to do is just, if you have a current resume or what have you, just email at admin@lmt.org and just put in that you're interested in the HRC, and you can see we're soft on interviews, so the process is very straightforward. It's admin, A-D-M-I-N, at lmt.org.
L-M-T dot...
O-R-G.
And what was before the L-M-T?
Admin, A-D-M-I-N, at L-M-T.
Can you spell that again, please?
A-D-M-I-N.
Oh, administration.
Admin, yeah.
Admin, yep.
Yeah.
That's also on the web, if you lose your paper, it's also on our website.
Okay.
It's admin, A D M I N, at lmt.org.
L M T dot?
O R G.
And what was before the L M T?
Admin, A D M I N, at L M T.
Can you spell that again, please?
A D M I N.
Oh, administration.
Admin, yeah.
Admin, yep.
That's also on the website. If you lose your paper, it's also on our website.
Okay. Yeah, I'll check the website.
Because I do that all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Lori Gray. I am a resident of Lower Makefield Township. First, yeah, it's such a positive meeting. I'm going to just keep it going at first anyways, and say I really do appreciate, on the agenda, all of the, where there is an expense, I do appreciate where it's documented, if it's budgeted, or if it's a grant, or how much is budgeted, or how much was a grant. It really is very helpful and saves a lot of questions. So thank you very much. My other question was, I was hoping I could get an update on where we stand with the single trash hauler conversation. I know there was that meeting about a month or so ago, but I wasn't sure what the out, where, where we goes, what's our next steps with that?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I can go right ahead.
So the EAC has had a meeting, and this is actually being my supervisor's report. This is one of the agenda items as to what the approach should be post that meeting. So they had some discussions and some suggestions for approaches going forward. At this time, they haven't made any recommendations. The board hasn't taken any action.
Okay.
So it is possible that, you know, they may come back with another recommendation. We may review it at that time, but there's nothing currently planned.
And when that happens, how does the public hear about it? Like, I know when it first came up, it was on the agenda as an agenda item. That comes out like two days, well, I get it through Facebook anyway. So it was on there two days before the meeting, about 48 hours before. So how, how would, how will we know?
So a couple of things. First, EAC meets regularly. Those meetings are televised, so you can watch all them, pre, post, they're, they're all there. Agendas are sometimes provided before that. Now, that's just a committee meeting, right?
Right, right.
So that was discussed about multiple times in the AC meetings over the last year. So folks who are innately are very curious or interested in that should go to that meeting and express their thoughts. When it gets to the board, typically, in that, that particular case, that was initial discussion. So there was no, you know, proposed ordinance, there was no proposed anything other than a recommendation to, to consider an RFP. And the board didn't take action at that meeting. So at that point, there's been no further action.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the information. Thanks very much.
The only thing I'd add is that the EAC does publish their agenda ahead of meetings on the website, under the boards and committees and EAC. And you can, you can find the, I'm looking at their, they have a meeting tomorrow night? Tomorrow night, yeah.
Yeah.
That is one of the items. Is there a strategy to move forward, group discussion? Very, very general topic, right? But it's some, it's one of the items on the agenda for discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess everybody's taller than me. All right. My name is Kathy Hanville, and I am the Chair of the Lower Makefield Historical Commission and live in L M T. I came tonight for another agenda item, but I have a few additional comments I wanted to make while I was here. I appreciate that you added our open house. I, I saw it wasn't on the agenda, but I do want to invite you all to our open house this Saturday. And it's not just about the historic buildings. We're going to be talking about all things history. So we have some Slate Hill stuff, the Patterson Forum Committee is going to be there, and there's going to be lots of stuff that Jim is helping us dig out today. Today, I'm here to request that we be added to a future agenda to discuss the demolition ordinance status. After the county reviewed it, we have not had the commission an opportunity to express our concerns about our inability to protect historic properties in L M T to the Board of Supervisors. Our commission was formed in 1977 specifically for the purpose to survey buildings and structures within the township, determine their historic significance, and to make recommendations regarding their preservation to the Board of Supervisors. We take this responsibility seriously. While we are all volunteers, Joe is finishing his certification in historic preservation at Bucks County, which is quite intensive. And I am now 30% through my work at Rutgers for, also for historic preservation certificate. We have multiple members with history degrees. We are competent, skilled, and equipped to make recommendations to this board on the significance of buildings in our community. However, making recommendations is not enough. This community does, has no tools to preserve the remaining historic treasures. Our last review, and this was a few years ago, found that in 1798, Lower Makefield Township had 137 dwellings. As of the end of 2023, only 31 of those dwellings remain. A demolition permit was approved or proposed for five properties in the previous three years, and that's the prior three years to 2023. Lower Makefield Township has 93 at that time, remaining 19th century houses. In the last three years, seven demolition permits have been approved or proposed for those properties. In addition, we are aware of other historic properties that are in jeopardy. Jim Zduski worked with us, and we did a site tour of a property at 743 River Road, which is pending sale. The buyer has already indicated to us that he wants to tear down this 1810 building. We prepared a thorough assessment, which we will email to all of you after this meeting. Well, Joe prepared it. An assessment of that property's specific historic significance, but if a demolition permit is filed, we have no recourse. We don't even usually know about it until way further down the road than we can actually do much. While I understand there was a recommendation for additional expertise beyond ours, deciding which properties are subject to the ordinance is a separate step from approving the ordinance itself. The list of properties designated as historic will change over time as the commission continues its research, and some properties are lost to demolition. We are working closely with Jeff Marshall to obtain, obtain verified information on building dates and the current, current building integrity. However, local historic significance goes beyond that. It is why, it is decisions on why these buildings are significant in our specific community. River Road meets that criteria. And I might add, it's been on the previous historic resource surveys. Our current focus is on preserving pre-1900 buildings. We will continue to build our historic resource survey as the buildings up to 1920s are now over 100 years old. Collecting information now on these buildings will help future historic commissions protect buildings as they become historic. Our definition of historic significance is in line with the criteria used by the federal government for the National Registry of Historic Places. We are well aware that age is not the only criteria for preservation. It is what the building means to the history of the community, who lived there, who built it, and what does it represent, and also how many are left. Our commission spends hours every month on our projects. Since taking over as Chair, I have had weeks where I spent more time volunteering for the township than doing paid work. We deserve the chance to fully present our concerns to the Board of Supervisors, because the longer this ordinance is delayed, the more properties are at risk. Thank you. And, you know, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment in the room, online? All right. With that, we will close round one of public comment. And we will move on to, excuse me, item number seven, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items, basically, the board votes to approve in total, and we go from there. Anyone from the board like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
No.
No? Can I, want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. That, I can call it to question?
I think there's public comment on this.
Are you raising your hand?
I would like to comment on something on the-
On the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, yeah. So do you want me to yank that in particular?
So as of right now, the board has said we're not going to remove anything from the consent agenda, so we wouldn't have comment on any one item. We would just vote on it. So if a board member would like to remove, we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
We do, we do, but-
Would you like to, you can always retract your motion.
I retract my motion.
Follow the rules. Okay.
Thank you.
So does someone want to remove something from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I believe it's items seven, E and F. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Related to the Regency at Yardley North, phases one and three?
Yes, sir.
Financial securities?
Yep.
Okay. So note that we are removing, we would then go on to make a motion, I believe, to approve consent agenda items seven, A through, A through D and G. Is that correct? Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Call that to question. All those in favor of approving those specific items on the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Motion carries four to zero. Now, items E and F, these are authorizing the full release of financial security for Regency at Yardley North. Item E is for phase one. Item F is for phase three. Why don't we go E first? Can we get a motion to start discussion?
So moved.
Let me get a second?
Second.
All right. Township Manager Cratcher, could you explain this one to us, please?
Sure. So in your packet was a recommendation from RVE, the Township Engineer, recommending the full release of, of financial security for the, the two respective phases that were noted. As, as noted, the item before you right now that was motioned relates to phase one. Melanie is in the audience from RVE. Mr. Chair, to the extent that you want her to comment on, on the recommendation, the basis for the recommendation, she would probably be best suited to do that.
Sure. Short version, though, my understanding is that the engineer has signed off that the developer has met all the requirements for release?
That, that is correct. So there, as there are statutory provisions in the municipality's planning code, specifically section 509 J, that talks about the role of the township engineer essentially certifying and recommending to this, to this body. So, so yes, that is, you are correct.
So the township engineer certified, and is there's a sort of a due date or?
Yeah. So the other thing just of note is that when a requesting party submits a request for release, the, the release request has to be considered within 45 days of receipt of such requests to permit the municipal engineer to certify in writing to you as the governing body that the portion of the work with, on the improvements that are subject to the release are able to be inspected and, and again, certified back to you. So these two items, the requesting party has granted an extension to this body until today. So May 7th is the, is the deadline to act on, on these release recommendations or release requests, I should say. So again, Melanie may be able to provide a little bit more insight, but we do have, again, recommendation letters from RVE certifying that the, the improvements are consistent with, with the approved plans.
So just from a timeline perspective, the requester submitted these, sounds like it's more than 45 days ago if they provided an extension.
Yeah, we, yes, we've been working through that process with them. As I know, there were some questions that, that the HOA had relative to, to these items. And so there have been back and forth between the design engineer and, and the, and the township engineer as it relates to these specific items.
And when, when were those, it, obviously, it's never, we, we never like to be in a position where we have to vote on something day of kind of thing.
Sure.
So is there, what, what was going on two weeks ago, let's say, or last meeting that we, we didn't have it ready to go then, so we could have some back and forth?
Yeah, Jim, I, I don't know. You, you've been primarily interfacing. Again, I apologize if you don't mind.
No, I appreciate it, actually. It's just, general, just to understand the process.
A few weeks ago, this had been on the agenda. The HOA had some concerns about the one basin and how it was functioning. The developer went out and did some additional testing just to see if they thought it was draining properly. We did have a good rainfall, I think 1.88 inches of rain, a little shorter than the three inch design rain that they had. And within 12 hours, it was, it was pretty much dry. But they did some additional testing, which Gilmore has now said shows the basin complies. And that was the reason why it was pushed off, to give them time to do a little bit of testing, have Gilmore certify that they thought it was correct. Remington Vernick looked at it. They also thought it was appropriate. I know the HOA is still a little bit concerned about, you know, because we didn't actually get three inches of rain. And so that's kind of their major point of concern.
And in this case, Remington Vernick, the township engineer, is Gilmore the applicant's engineer?
Yeah, Gilmore's design engineer for Toll Brothers.
Okay.
Yes.
So they're certifying their design, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so RVE saw their, saw their data, said it complies, checks the box, and then we're ready to go?
Correct.
And I'm assuming, I'll give you a chance in a second here once we get through this. I'm assuming there's probably still some concerns from a HOA perspective, but we'll hear that.
That is correct.
Okay. So the engineers are, sounds like they're agreeing, but we want to hear what the HOA has to say. Is that a fair summary?
That is, yes.
Okay. Jim, we may call you back up. So with that, any questions, one second, any other questions from the board? I don't mean to, all right. With that, I'll open it to public comment on the, on the motion. And again, just as a reminder, please state your name, whether or not you're resident.
Yeah, I've been here through that. Mark Peroli, 221 Grant Way, Regency at Yardley, Board President. Our concerns come from not only our observations, but from Bustamante, which is our engineer. And as Jim stated, the three inch benchmark really hasn't been met. And there is some concern on the part of our engineer, if in fact, the rain garden, I have to call it that, because originally it was built as a basin, then in 2017, supposedly was converted to a rain garden. And it will not function the way it is intended to because of some structural issues that Bustamante has determined. So I have a concern about that. The other part of it, as long as I have the microphone.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, I welcome a little back and forth. And Jim or RVE, whoever, had, HOA has their own independent engineer, it sounds like?
Yes.
Engineer who's done some analysis. Have, have they seen Gilmore's certi, Gilmore's data for certification that RVE signed off on?
They do, because I sent it to them.
So you have it as well?
The township was good enough to share it with me. And I don't know if David or Jim, but I wanted our engineers to have a look at it, because they're the ones that I rely on to support us.
I understand. And are they disagreeing with the opinions of the two other engineers?
They're disagreeing with the fact that the, this particular rain garden will not function correctly at that three inch level.
But we haven't hit the three inch level to prove it in either direction, is what-
That is correct. But based on the design engineer's report, they, Bustamante, our engineer, believes that it will not.
And they're all Pennsylvania professional engineers, I'm assuming?
Right, yeah, sure.
Okay. And then, related, who, does the HOA maintain ownership of, of these basins? In the town, we, the township has taken control of many basins in the township.
In this, in this case, these are private facilities that are going to be transferred, if they have not already been transferred, will be transferred to the HOA for perpetuity.
Okay. So from a recourse perspective, we have, and the design engineer signed off on it, the municipal engineer is agreeing with the design engineer, the HOA has a separate engineer that hasn't signed off on it. I'm trying to be quick here.
That is correct.
It's going to stay in the, you know, that allows us to release funds, right? And then the ownership-
It essentially requires you to release funds.
Required, right, yeah.
So it's not even, it's, it says-
Not that we can, we have to.
The Board of Supervisors shell upon certification by the municipal engineer, yes.
Yeah. And then, does, and I don't know that we have any say in this matter, but does the developer then, are they providing any funds to the HOA to address any issues that may occur? that may occur with any of these?
In the future?
In the future?
My understanding, and I know our attorney, Stefan, has been in touch with Maureen. Hi, Maureen, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Jim.
The issue has to do with, my understanding is that in 2020, the rain gardens, the basins, were released from the responsibility of the developer to the HOA. Since then, there have been some, there has been a lot of remedial work that has been done. And we're talking strictly with the North, the Villas. There are many problems in the South, but that's a whole other issue. I found out just recently that what I believe to be a maintenance bond for issues within our community, that maintenance bond, it appears, is only to the development, the Regency. And the Township doesn't have a maintenance bond with them. I understand there is some conversation going on. Maureen, I don't want to speak for you, but I know Stefan spoke to you in terms of where does the Township fit in and can the developer be held with some sort of financial security for 18 months, on the basin specifically?
Right, that's correct. So Stefan and I had a brief conversation. This was actually sort of new on my desk, so to speak. And the question is whether the maintenance bond really will, typically it's in the Township's hands for those 18-month period and then released. At this point in time, because these things are not going to be dedicated to the Township.
Private, yeah.
They're all going to be private. Do we just take the, does the homeowners' association negotiate with Toll Brothers as the developer and request a maintenance bond? Really step into the same shoes that we would otherwise be in? And that's where I'm leaning towards right now. Stefan and I haven't really discussed it at length, but again, this conversation just took place yesterday. So like to look at it a little bit more, but that's where I'm leaning towards.
That's more typical of when they're privately owned.
It would be, because it's private, they're, yeah, they're privately owned facilities. Therefore, Toll Brothers will or should, or should be requested, and maybe you insist that they post a maintenance bond in favor of the HOA, as opposed to opposing in favor of the Township, as they would normally do for any other public facility.
And we would be looking for a legal document, as you would if you were in that position, that would hold them responsible for 18 months. And there would be a specific figure, number, dollar amount that would go with that?
Yeah, Stefan could, we could assist him in coming up with that number. And Stefan can, I'm sure, determine what it is. There's no, it's not high math, really. It's not, it's not difficult.
The engineers usually assist with that, too.
It would be the engineer. So it would just be a percentage of what the engineers project it to, the entire project to be. It's usually 15% of that number is held. And at that point in time, I don't want to abscond with liability or responsibility, but it really would be between you as the HOA and Toll Brothers.
Okay. The only reason I bring that up, and I know that you had that conversation, I have to thank the Board of Supervisors, Township Manager, and Jim for all the support that we've received up to this point. Unfortunately, it's been, I guess we started in March of 2012, and here we are in '25, and we are not fully transitioned from the developer. But that's another story. But I thank you guys for, for supporting us to this point. And I guess I brought it up, a little more support, you know, to help us out as we go forward with these issues. So whatever you could lend to us, we'd appreciate it, your conversations with Stefan or whatever. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Maureen. Can we make this motion, approve this, subject to or contingent upon a maintenance agreement between the HOA and the developer? Or it's kind of too late already?
You're really out of it at this point. I don't think you want to insert yourself, because if you insert yourself into the, the mix, then you, you
Sure.
You assume some responsibility or liability. I really do believe that at this point in time, and I'll advise you if my opinion changes, but right now, I believe it's a, an issue between the HOA and Toll Brothers as the developer. And it's only with respect to the maintenance bond. The, from what you're voting on right now is the financial, it doesn't have to do with the maintenance period. It's actual, just release of monies held for work that is completed, that RVE says is complete, as well as Gilmore.
And our hands are kind of tied when it comes to that, because the agreement says that as long as the engineer says that it passes, then we have to release the funds, correct?
Yeah. So again, the statute says, just in part, upon certification, and the certification, again, is coming from the Municipal Engineer, which RVE is the Municipal Engineer, the governing body shall authorize release by the bonding company or lending institution of an amount as estimated by the Municipal Engineer, fairly representing the value of the improvements completed. In this case, they've certified that all required improvements are completed.
Gotcha.
And then there was that additional step that was taken to consult with the Design Engineer to get documentation to, to be able to provide that to the HOA.
And this may be, I don't, so the design was, goes up to the three-inch number. They never hit the three-inch number. They got a higher number, but not three, right? The 1.8 or whatever it was, Jim? So is there anything? Maureen, is there anything, any potential liability there for us if we sign off on this and they haven't hit, and they signed off on the three inches, but we didn't hit the three? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't.
Do we have enough information to do that?
No, at that point, then, I, again, to point, point fingers or place responsibility on somebody, it would really be the engineers, because the engineers are the experts in the field. And they're stating that, based on the information that they reviewed and analyzed, that even though it reached the one, I guess they did some computation with 1.8 versus three, they're saying that
So they've certified it?
They, they're certifying that it
Yeah. I mean, even from a practical perspective, just as I'm thinking about that, while Mark noted that, you know, this was obviously a large project and it had an extended duration in terms of timing. I mean, in theory, there's probably facilities that are, if it would have went quicker, you may never, you know, there may be circumstances where you never hit.
Never hit.
You know, a design threshold.
We know when the rain garden came into service?
It was originally built as a basin to retain water. My understanding is, and actually, we have a resident who took pictures back in, I think it was 2017, where it was told, determined that they had to convert it. I'm not sure why.
Right.
If the Township Engineer had insisted they do that, and they converted it to a rain garden, indicating that the water shouldn't stay there more than 72 hours. And that's where the rub is.
So, because I'm acutely aware of this stuff, I went in, in August of 2024, there were 4.49 inches within a day on August 7th.
We retained water.
Okay, but for longer than 72 hours?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Do you have video or? It's over three inches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you have video or photograph, photo evidence of that?
I can research that, but I don't know, you know, where that might have been. Like I said, there is one resident who was on top of this. I would research that.
So Mark, just out of curiosity, you mentioned some of the remedial work that was done. Was that remedial work post that event or pre that event?
In '24, there has nothing been done since that event.
Since that event.
John, you said that was in '24?
Yeah, August 7th, 2024.
As far as I know, nothing has been done to N1 since.
Again, that was over three inches.
Yes.
Right? So that's beyond its, yeah.
Okay. But I, my sense is, and I don't have anything with me, but I can research it, to see if we have some evidence of how long the water remained in that basin on that occurrence. What was that date, John?
August 7th, 2024.
Okay.
And it's 4.49 inches.
Okay.
So it's, huh? No, I'm, I'm on the, no, I know 2023. But yeah, that was July. But no, this is August 2024.
I'll research it, and if I have something, I'll get it to David and Jim.
At the same time, though, we're in a bit of a pickle, right? In that the engineer certified it, our, our extension date is today, and we have to do something or what, I guess, if we, what's our, what's our risk if we don't do something, I guess, is the final piece of the?
The developer?
Gets the money.
Automatically gets the money?
Right.
It's deemed approved.
No matter what. Because they, they, okay, so.
All right. I have one other question relative to this. The Bucks County Conservation District, ultimately, and before they issued the NOT, that they would come out and inspect. So there is another step.
They haven't issued an NOT yet?
No. No. And my understanding is that won't happen until S1 and S3 are approved as well. Jim, David, I don't know, somebody help me with this. My understanding, that's not going to happen until the entire development is complete.
So, Jim, as you prepare to answer that, that's interesting that we're able to sign off on this prior to NOT. NOT, NOT stands for Notice of Termination. That means the Conservation District's done the inspection of the basins and everything else, and says they're good to go. So I was just curious where that fits in the process.
When they receive their NPDS permit, which is a stormwater discharge permit, they received it for the entire project, both the north side and the south side.
Okay.
So the Notice of Termination will not be done until after both sides are complete.
I got you. So they have one permit for the entire development versus one for each half? Okay.
So we might be a year or two away from that, based on the condition of S1 and S3, the two Souths?
Yeah, at the same time, I would say the Conservation Commission, or County Conservation District, they, they do sometimes do interim inspections if there's an issue. That's not uncommon. It's not necessarily part of an NOT, but if there's an issue, that does fall under their jurisdiction, under the NIPDS permit, their PCSM portion, right? That's the PCSM.
Yeah. Actually, now that I think about it, you know, that is one extra level of protection that we do have, that if in the next year or so it takes them to finalize the basins and the carriages and do that work and get to completion.
We can leverage that.
We can see how it performs over that period of time.
Yeah. And we can relay that information to the Conservation District, and they can make a determination if they're functioning properly prior to NOT, and there may be conditions to tweak things, I would say, if, if they, in order for them to issue the NOT.
I thought I heard you say, though, that there could be a request that there be an interim inspection. Is that something that the Township or the HOA requests?
Anyone.
Any, anyone can request that. I think what's being said is that the action of this body doesn't change the jurisdiction of the Conservation District as it relates to its enforcement of provisions. So there is still another entity that retains ultimate jurisdiction as it relates to this issue that, that the HOA could interface with to ensure prior to the issuance of that Notice of Termination, that the facilities are functioning.
The Conservation District and the DEP, because they technically kind of go together on that permit, are implementing both state and federal regulations. We're simply doing municipal, right? So there are still, there's, there's layers here, right? And the other two layers are technically still open, I guess, right, Jim?
Yes.
If the NOT isn't, so.
So we do have some safeguards going forward.
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
To clarify. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad someone thought about that.
Better late than ever.
And that, that basically covers both items, right? Phase one and phase three.
They're, they're in a similar, similar situation, yeah.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on item E, I believe?
Correct.
Okay, no more public comment. Any more board comment? Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the full release of financial security for Regency at Yardley North, Phase three.
Second.
All right. Any further board comment? Any public comment? Nothing online? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four zero. Come on up, sir. Next item is item eight, Community Development. Take it away.
You may recall the last meeting we had on the agenda, the transfer of an easement from
Not yet.
From Aqua to, from Lower Makefield Township to Aqua, over the open space parcel, the five-acre open space parcel adjacent to Regency. And at the time, the board had questioned whether that was part of our agreement. We did verify that the asset purchase agreement did list the Regency at Yardley specifically as one of the pending development plans that would be applicable to that. There was a drafting error, it appears, in there with the tax parcel, 20-32-004-001 versus 20-32-001-004. So they boxed the numbers somehow there. So I think we're, this is something that was contemplated as part of the asset purchase agreement.
All right. So we don't need to hit them up for more money for a new easement, I guess?
Yeah, it's, I mean, the schedule, I mean, the schedule specifically notes Township Open Space. This is the only Township Open Space in the, in the development.
And I think last time, we kind of asked the question, just double-checked to make sure there aren't any other situations where this may be occurring that we need to be cognizant of.
Yeah, again, there's a schedule in the asset purchase agreement that talks about pending development plans. So there are, let's see, there's some reference to some of the facilities at Prickett Preserve at Edgewood, and then there's also reference to 301 Oxford Valley Road, Makefield Executive Quarters. But those are the items that are, that were contemplated and disclosed as part of the asset purchase agreement in the schedule, so.
Well, let's get through this one first, but I will absolutely let you do that. All right. With that, can you get, anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment or questions? All right. Any public comment on the motion? All right. Call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries four zero. Don't move, I believe a board member has a question for you, since you're available.
I'm sorry to make you wait one more second, but those people are dead. They'll keep waiting.
Oh, my gosh. They got time.
Sorry.
That's how you roll, all right?
Jim, I'm just, I've been asked too, and I've been wondering myself, is there any movement on the point?
Oh.
Those, those houses, we're trying to save one of, you know, so like, anything going on, on the point? And if not, what can we?
Yes, the applicant was trying to finalize their PennDOT Highway occupancy permit for the emergency access from their parking area out to Yardley Langhorn Road. They had submitted to PennDOT, they had had a review or two, and then PennDOT now wants to make it a full highway occupancy permit submission, which kind of doesn't make sense. So they're in discussions with PennDOT Emergency Services over how to approach that. And hopefully, once they get that resolved, they'll be coming in with building permits to get started on the renovation work at the house at the corner, and then the replication of the other house. And then afterward, those two are underway, then starting on the other buildings. So there is a sequence laid out in the development agreement that they have to start on the older houses before they start on the new ones.
Yes, my friends at the Historic Review Commission made me put that in, so I know about that. What I'm worried about is that, you know, tick-tock, tick-tock. And I appreciate that PennDOT has thrown a wrench, you know, but what, if anything, we don't have to answer today, can we do to preserve, protect those buildings so that they're really there to be worked on when that time comes?
Just to jump in, HOPs don't usually take that long. I just did a couple myself for something else, so I'm curious about.
Yeah. And PennDOT, they have the simplified HOP process for something like a minor driveway or, or something like an emergency access. And for some reason, they wanted something more robust, which on the surface doesn't make sense to me. And more robust means a lot more time, expense, and
Dave, can we just make sure that we're, we're assisting in whatever way we can to get this going?
Will do. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
All right, number nine, I mean.
An urgent matter.
I'm teasing. So I am very excited for item 8B, under Community Development. It's the consideration of the award of the 2025 Slate Hill Cemetery Headstone Restoration Project to Roth Cemetery Services in the amount of $33,200, which is funded by a Keystone Historic Preservation Grant that has a 50% match. Township Manager, do you have anything you need to add? Township manager, do you have anything you need to add, or are we having a presentation?
They have a whole presentation.
A few of our members from the Historical Commission would like to come up. And just so everyone knows, we did receive six bids. And the apparent low bidder was Roth Cemetery Services. We reviewed all their qualifications, talked to people that they did work for, who were very pleased with the works, that they were very professional, great to work with, you know, all the accolades that we would hope for in a contractor. And we therefore recommend award of the base bid in the amount of $33,200 to Roth Cemetery Services.
And just one additional note, the required match beyond the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant is incorporated into the adopted 2025 budget that was adopted by this body. So the match is available for the grant funding and was contemplated.
Really, the total, just to make sure I'm clear, the total value of the 33,200, that's inclusive of the 50% match, or the 50% match is on top of that?
No, the total project cost is 33,200. I believe our grant was for 25,000, is that?
So that's kind of good, because we did budget a lot more money for the match, because we anticipated a much higher cost. However, we had a bunch of competitive bids. And ultimately, as we go through the work, if we find additional work that needs to be done, we do have room to add on to it.
Awesome.
To get more accomplished, to restore the cemetery for our former residents.
That's funny. All right, and I assume you'd like to make a little present. If you want to, please feel free, if it's more comfortable, you can sit at the table.
We will.
You can sit at the table, so you both have a mic, or you can go back and forth, but.
I'm going to Beyonce it. You inspired me earlier. I'd like to start.
If you could also.
I'm Monica Hinden, and I'm a resident of L M T, and I'm on the Historical Commission. And I just would like to open with the fact that we are all going to die. All of us. So all these people here were us one day.
Nope.
Our former residents. So what we have here, and maybe Kathy, you can walk it around for everyone. It's really cool, but it's very tiny. This is just an overhead map. No, this is a work in progress. This is not final. This is just our work in progress.
Kathy, do you really want to show it off? You could, it's a great banner.
The cameras are right there, so if you flip there and he'll be able to.
We'll show you guys first. Don't worry, I'll talk long enough. I won't talk too long, I promise. But, so basically, this is showing one of our projects at Slate Hill Cemetery. For anyone that doesn't know, Slate Hill Cemetery is our historic cemetery on Yardley Morrisville Road, right on the border with Yardley, but it's ours. And this is, it's the oldest cemetery in Bucks County. One of the oldest European cemeteries in the country. So what we've done earlier this year, we used commission funds from events where we've raised money to do ground penetrating radar to determine how many unmarked graves there are. Because anyone that's been there knows it's a field of haphazard old graves. A lot of them are unmarked. Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, about how many do we think? Around 200 unmarked graves? About 200.
200 red dots.
So on the map, any of the like kind of pink rectangles, those are unmarked graves that we determined through the ground penetrating radar. So while we are restoring the grave markers that are there with the funds that we just approved, thank you, everyone. Oh, but you will shortly, thank you. We are also determining, making a, this will end up as a digital interactive map. So you can see every single plot that's there that has a marker or not. You can click on it, learn who they were, a little bit about them. This will also coordinate with our Q R code project. For anyone that's walked through the cemetery, you'll see, you can scan your phone with the Q R code and learn about various residents that are buried there. We are also gathering a list, we have a list that we're adding to daily of people that are buried there that don't have markers. So we're not going to be placing them haphazardly, but ultimately, we will have a list of people that are buried there. And we will also have markers throughout the cemetery of unmarked graves, so we can give them a bit of acknowledgement for being there. And we have goals for additional signage throughout the cemetery. Because what it is becoming, as more and more people get involved and interested in it, is kind of a community space. It's this beautiful park-like feeling. It is not an active cemetery. The last burial that we know of is from 1929. Doesn't count maybe the ones on the outside of the wall that we found, if you can see on the map. We're not sure if they were placed there after it was closed or not. Anyways, really interesting information. We have many people that were alive during the revolution. We have, we believe William Yardley is there. We can't confirm that, but we're pretty sure. And a lot of names you'll recognize in the neighborhood, Stockton, Stackhouse, Leadums. A lot of names like that. South Street on Yardley is actually not a direction, it's a last name, I learned. Anyways, lots of great information. This will hopefully be available online by the fall. And we're coordinating all of this as well with our contractor to restore the stones and doing lots of other projects, including the ghost tour. We're working with, we're in the early stages with Pensbury right now to possibly work this into their curriculum for different grades, depending on what they're learning about, because it spans hundreds of years. George School's coming, lots of, lots of, lots of community interest. So this is a really exciting project to be a part of and also maybe help you get your mind around the fact that we're all going to die. So let's acknowledge it, celebrate it, and acknowledge the people that have come before us and gone before us. On to Kathy.
I just want to add that Monica, before she was even an official member, came up with a master plan for the cemetery and has taken us all this way, including getting the grant for this and other grants. So wanted to give her a big shout out. And for a cemetery that's been in existence since 1690, and was part of the Falls Meeting, the Falls Quaker Meetings, which is why that whole first section is unmarked, because Quakers didn't use stones, which is why with the thing with William Yardley, we don't know for sure, because he could be in Fallsington. We think he's here. For a cemetery that was founded in 1690, our first map is 1926. There's a copy of that in the back, so you can all come on Saturday and see it all. This is a work in progress. The woman, after the G P N R is going to make this official. And Monica and I and two other volunteers spent literally hours trying to research and figure out who those red dots were. Going back to the 26 records, to Mercer, we've done a lot, a lot of work on that, and we will continue to do that. So I just wanted to add that piece also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yes, so when we, the ground.
Cemetery all night.
Yeah, so on the ground penetrating radar, the first time we were there, because it was like super, remember that? Were you there for that day?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. Have we found any headstones that are submerged?
No. So when we did it ourselves the first time, you know, we kind of got some hits, but we were able, and I also want people to know, that was not taxpayer funded. That was money that we have raised, that, you know, we've been contributing to the community grant. But no, interestingly enough, although the person doing the ground penetrating radar, he did say, for whatever reason, it's easier for him to see what's six feet under than what's right close to it. So we haven't found any additional headstone, except for the mystery one from 1993 that she's going to get all excited about.
Well, no, yeah, we have found some footstones. Remember, we ripped some out. We found some footstones that don't have, that don't match headstones we have, so that's cool. We might be able to pair them with some of the names that we're finding. But we did find a 1782 stone that was found in 1993. We have a newspaper article about it, was apparently lost again. But I found one of the guys in 93 that found it and confirmed it's the same stone. And so we're working with him to see if there was like a pile where they stuck stones in the 90s. But we found a 1782 stone that has markings on both sides, which is really weird and really cool. And it'll be up once the grant's done, if you guys want to come see it. Fun stuff.
And then one, do we have a date in October for the cemetery tour?
I gotta look at my calendar. It's like the 18th or 19th, it's whatever that Saturday is.
Okay.
Yes, and last year it sold out.
Getting tickets in advance.
I'm just there for the ice cream. Don't you want to tell us about something or someone you found recently, just with the American Legion and your?
Oh, yeah.
Come on. I follow dead people.
Thank you for the people that follow my Facebook, at Slate Hill. When we were doing the research and looking at the broken stones, we found a broken and fallen stone for Thomas Chalky Neald. And when we started to investigate, we actually found out that he was an additional Civil War soldier. It was not marked on his headstone, but we found his V A record. And we think he's one of the, we have one in the segregated side also. One of the people that came back and died shortly thereafter, so probably of some injury or disease or something, because he was, I think, 21. So that is one of the stones that's going to be fixed. And the American Legion was amazing. I reached out to them and they met me there Saturday morning, so we got a proper marker for him. So the stone's down, but the gar marker is up with the flag.
Great work. Thank you, ladies.
So Mr. Chair, I think we need to make a motion to consider the award of the 2025 Slate Hill Cemetery Headstone Restoration Project to Roth Cemetery Services in the amount of $33,200.
Second. Any board comment or questions? Now they did nothing. Any, any public comment? With that, I'll call the question. I don't want Siri's answer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four to zero. Thank you very, very much. This is exciting. Item nine, Engineers' Report. You all got the packet. Any, any questions from anybody? All right. Item 10, Managers' Report.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer any questions they may have regarding anything.
Is the rumor true that we'll be able to pave Susan's Circle soon?
Yes, I can make mention of that if you'd like. So earlier in the week, as you're aware, we were in court on this matter and we emerged successfully. So it is, as part of the court order that was issued, there is a requirement for the developer to pave Susan's Circle within 120 days of yesterday. So, and again, that's at his sole cost and expense and subject to township standards and township inspection. And there's also a requirement for him to dedicate those facilities that remain outstanding that were previously contemplated to be dedicated into the public system. So happy to report that that matter is resolved and looking forward to that work being done.
Are the residents aware?
They are not at this point. I know Katie, who is out of the office currently, gets regular calls from one resident in particular. And I may actually have some emails as well. We'll reach out to them and communicate that, yes.
Sure, they'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, we're happy to communicate that.
If you live on Susan's Circle and you've been waiting for your road to be paved, it sounds like it's going to happen in the next few months, so keep an eye out. Exciting times. Any other, nothing else?
No additional items, so.
Item 11, Park and Rec. This, I believe, 11A is an item that came before the board last meeting regarding Phase Three Memorial Park East. We, I think we requested some follow-up relative to long-term O and M plans.
Yeah, the primary question that remained after the last discussion had to do with the required match associated with the local share, statewide local share account funding that was received. Again, $900,000 was received through the program. There is no, as I mentioned, programmatically, there is no required match. The township did make some commitment to the potential of a match in the application. However, in interacting with D C D staff who administers the program on behalf of the Commonwealth Financing Authority, there is no, there will be no required match. So to the extent that the project is scaled to match the available state funding, there would be no local match required in order to implement some of the contemplated improvements that were initially outlined in the Memorial Park Master Plan.
So some of the discussion, not all of it, but some of the discussion around implementing anything really is, was related to, you know, it's great to get big grants like this to build new stuff.
Sure.
But new stuff comes with its own cost over time, right? In terms of operations and maintenance. I believe one of the items, so I'm a little curious about if there's been any more contemplation of that, what it might cost. At the same time, two part.
Yeah, go ahead.
The second part is, I think that we had discussed a little bit, I think, about, one of the items would be either additional or upgraded bathrooms. I'm curious, I guess, if there was a focus on upgrading the existing bathrooms to be A D A compliant, et cetera. And that was the focus. Could we just do that? Is that something the grant would cover? Or does that, or does that fall within?
Monica, you spoke with C F A, I don't, or D C D staff, I don't know if you can, if you spoke specifically about that item. I'll just, as Monica comes up, in terms of, you know, long-term cost of ownership issues and ongoing expense, again, you know, that issue was heard loud and clear. And I thought we left that, we're making sure that, you know, to the extent that we proceed with a project, that that's, you know, a focus on, in terms of the design work. Again, as all we have right now is a concept. So there's, the item that's actually on the agenda relates to finalization of construction drawings, design, those kinds of things, project scale, scaling to again, match the available funds. So those items are difficult to determine at this point, because we don't necessarily, we don't have facilities that are designed that express sort of ambition as it relates to project design. Obviously, can be fundamental and foundational to any design work that was done. But I don't know that we're going to be able to answer that definitively at this point, other than to say, we understand the issue and that'll be a focus of the design effort.
And I guess part of the question is, at what point does the board provide input into what we'd like to see as part of the design? Right? Because what we don't want to do is have an engineer go off and design something that, you know, they think is great or they get direction on something, and then the board comes back and says, no, we don't like that at all. We would have preferred you to do this.
Yeah, and I, Derek, I don't know, or Monica, was there a discussion about a sort of a kickoff meeting, if you will, right? In the R F P? So again, that engagement can start right at the commencement of a process, if, you know, if that, if this matter moves to that, to that stage. And then there were design points. So there's multiple touch points that are contemplated in the, in the, the design R F P that would be released.
Thirty, sixty, ninety type of thing. What I'm thinking, a couple of things. One, really, the concept level where we're just kind of talking about ideas and laying a few things, that's more like a 5% when you talk about engineering percent drawings. Thirties, you actually get a little design done. So we want to make sure that at that concept level, we haven't progressed too far, so we're not spinning our, you know, we're not.
Sure.
I don't want to say wasting money, but, you know, we're focused. And then, I'm saying this just based on listening to board members. I'm anticipating that there may be some guidance to not spend all of it, you know, not go up to the 900. It might be, hey, we really just want to focus on X versus X Y Z. I'm not certain about that, but I'm getting that feeling based on what I've heard on other things. So we'd want to look at that early on too, to see what, if we're going to cap it at anything, so we don't go too far, too fast. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, yep.
Other board members, or you guys just want to go forth and design everything? I don't want to assume anything, but that's, I'm seeing what I was hearing.
Yeah, so I, just on that issue, if I could just, so there is specific language in the document that's before you for your consideration that explicitly acknowledges that the scope of the improvements may need to be reduced to match the available funding. And there's language that says it is anticipated that the consultant will work with the Township Board of Supervisors, Park and Recreation Board, and Township staff to refine the project scope. It is understood that a sketch plan and rough construction cost estimate would be needed for the Township's review and approval prior to consultant proceeding with the engineering and design phase. So there is, again, a direct sort of touch point that talks about sort of concept plan refinement and retouch with those.
And not for, I'm glad you said something that I wanted to point out. This is release of an R F P. It's not an award of a project.
That is correct.
So we can get our proposals, we can see what the engineering design numbers come out to, we can. out to, we can get a, that might tell us a little bit about what the project costs might end up being, and then we can make some decisions once we get those, too, right? So this is.
That is correct, yep.
We're not incurring any costs at this point. We're just kind of starting a process so we can look at that. All right, just want to make sure we're square on that.
I miss.
I know you.
Just, just really very quickly, you know, if we move forward, if, if the board approves this, I just want to make sure, I think there's commitment across the board, but at the rededication of the all-inclusive playground, we heard loud and clear that the facilities do not accommodate people with different needs, and that's got to be corrected. And the only way that I can get behind this is if that's corrected, so.
Yeah, and there's specific reference in terms of accessibility design and ADA standards in the, in the, in the document.
And we'll, we'll have, after this, once we get proposals back, we'll have multiple opportunities to make sure that, that is the case. So I appreciate your comments.
Yep.
And we'll keep holding to it.
Yeah, I'd like to concur with that on the accessibility in the bathrooms. It's an issue the Disability Advisory Board will definitely work on as part of that and generally very, very supportive of that as well. With that, can I make a motion to release of an engineering design to services request for proposal for Memorial Park East Phase Three, partially funded through statewide local share account grant in the amount of $900,000?
Second?
All right. Any further board comments or questions? Any public comment? Come on up, sir.
Oh, somebody from Parks and Rec.
I know you know this, but I'll say it anyway. Please state your name and whether or not you're a resident. I won't ask you your address, though. I'll just ask you whether you're a resident.
Doug Kraus. Yes, I am Lower Makefield Township resident, and I am also on the Park and Recreation Board as chair. So good evening and thanks for hearing my comments. I just wanted to thank you for, for bringing this up and exploring this opportunity. I think we've all been down this road before and understand the value of parks in our township and what it brings. And I think this is a great opportunity to take advantage of the investment the state's going to make here in Lower Makefield. We all provide taxes to the state, and anytime we have an opportunity to get some of that money back, I think we should do the due diligence to make sure that those monies flow back to the township whenever we can. And I think, I concur with all of you here. It's like, what's the right thing for the right, for the right price, right? We don't have to spend all the money, but I think understanding what the needs are for the township, where we can fill those gaps, and to your point, Dan, understand the materials, the longevity, and the maintenance upfront. Those are the things probably we haven't done well in the past, but, you know, here's, we've got a new opportunity to do that, right? And take advantage of the experts, whether it be through the engineering, the board, public comment. I think we've had a lot better success recently in terms of taking in input from the public and incorporating that into our ideas and then implementation. So I just want to be an advocate for that. The Park and Rec Board will, will do the same and work in concert with all the members of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Engineers, the Township Managers, et cetera, to make sure that what we do, we get it done right and it's lasting impact for the township.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Appreciate all you do, Doug. All right. Any more public comment? Doesn't look like anyone's online. With that, we have a motion and a second, so we'll call it the question. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four to zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve payment application number one, full and final payment in the amount of $92,298.28 to American Pool, Pennsylvania for the 2025 pool painting project.
Second?
All right, motion and second. Any board comments or questions? I'll ask the obvious one, I guess. Painting's done, looks good.
Looks good.
All that stuff.
Yep.
Everyone's happy with it?
Open soon.
Okay.
All ready to go.
All right. Most, any public comment? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four to zero. Monica, you want to take this opportunity to announce the pool opening?
Pool's opening, um, May 24th. If you haven't registered yet, get in there and register. We're, we're ready for you.
That's, there we go.
Pools are full, ready to go.
Do you want to, do you want to talk about what you did just in terms of sort of a community, I guess, open house or opportunity to see the pool this evening?
Sure, we had an open house today. We had, I would have liked a larger turnout, but it was, it was good. We generated about $7,000 in revenue during the open house event. We took maybe 30 people, 40 people around the pool for tours, and there were a lot of people returning. So, good day. It was a great time for Kristen Huber, our new pool manager, to take people around and her to get to know the pool even more, too, so.
The other, the other thing we intend to do, and I know there was some discussion on this, is to invite each of you to maybe do a walkthrough prior to actual pool opening, just to share any perspective, you know, any sort of visual observations that you may have. So we'll be in touch with, with the date and time that's convenient for the five of you as members of the Board of Supervisors to do that.
Excellent, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Keep selling, keep selling. Oh, we got, you want to say something, Derek? Item number, sorry.
Wakey-wakey.
Item number 12, Public Works. Our first item is authorizing advertisement of the bid for the 2025 road program.
Good evening, board. I actually made a PowerPoint for once. Had to brush off some PowerPoint skills. So before you tonight is obviously the consider authorizing the advertisement for bid for the 2025 road program. As the board is aware, we have contracted engineering services with Panone. I've been working with them over the last month, finalizing our, our roads. I know it may be a little difficult on the screen. We will post this on the website after tonight for all the residents to see. But before you would be considering which roads it would be?
Put it in presentation mode, if you would.
See, I, see, I don't use PowerPoint. Yeah, absolutely. Here you go, PowerPoint, presentation mode. I did, I did give printout copies. It is a little difficult to see on PowerPoint. The project is divided in base bid and it has multiple alternate bid locations. The base bid road would be obviously Makefield Road. That would be from Yardley-Marsfield down to Suffolk, of two sections of roll-offs, a couple entry points at Marshia Terrace, Kings, Kilby, Piper, and Olson over in Queens Grant, and Berkeley, Essex, and Norway, a small little circle street off of Yardley-Marsfield Road. And then in addition to that, there is a few alternate bids, which would be Weber Drive, which would actually complete all the roads within Queens Grant neighborhood, finally. Over the last five years, we've been chipping away at that, six years possibly. Alternate, too, would be Penn Valley Terrace, again, four roads in there to finally complete that neighborhood, complete Gloria and Marshia Terrace, David Terrace, Gloria and Esther. That would finally complete that neighborhood, sections of Edgewood Road, and a little section of Esther Lane. As you can see, again, it is difficult on the monitor. The, the base bid is guesstimated with the engineers' estimates, working with Panone, we're about $1.7 million. As you're familiar, our new road millage, we have about $2,500,000. So we're close. It's about 3.48 miles. So the intent with the old, many alternate bids is try to get the most bang for a buck to see where we land with contractors and where they come into play. So to, again, spend as close to that $2 million as possible. So again, unfortunately, the roads in the alternate bids are not guaranteed, but it's, it allows us the flexibility to see what other roads we can get as close to that $2 million as possible without going over. You'll take notice, there is obviously about $200,000 in contingencies, which is, you know, changes in quantities as we're going. A lot of these roads have major base repairs, possibly need it. And again, we are spending approximately $200,000 alone in the base bid for ADA ramp improvements. So that would be removing the ADA ramps at the intersections and making them compliant to the current standards or PennDOT's needs. So like I said, if I had my way, I would love to do all this, but again, you're looking at $2.8 million. Obviously, we don't have that kind of money right now. So just, just for the board to see where, where all these alternates can go. These are some conditions, photos, just for the board to realize, this, these few photos are roll-offs. Again, people may look at roll-offs as, you know, it's not that bad. Roll-offs is, has high volume to it. Again, if we don't start addressing these issues now, again, we're looking at higher cost of repair. We're getting base damage on these roads, things like that. This is a couple of sections. This is just an entrance road to Marshia Terrace. Again, littered with potholes. It is a small section of road, but we, we need to repair these things before they become detrimental, even worse. And again, the, the longer we delay this, the more the cost is. This is an example of inlets that would get replaced, the inlet tops, that would, that would come off, obviously, and replace that. That's in Queens Grant, I believe. And again, this is Weber and Piper. This is what the roadways look like in there. So again, they're not pretty. They are well beyond their useful life. I forget what they were, 1970s possibly. I forget, I do have it here, but, and then this is Berkeley, Essex, and Norway back there. So these roads are well needed to be done, and many more, so. As a quick little disinformation for the board to see.
In addition to these, Derek, do you have like a three, five-year look ahead as to what you might?
Yeah, so I, we do, I do keep a, I call it a running three, well, it would be a four-year plan because it includes this year. So yes, there is, there is a running list of roads. Like I kind of do explain to residents, and I, I tend not to publish that because it kind of creates false hope. I know prior directors felt like publishing it was good, but for example, Berkeley and Essex was not on anyone's three-year plan, even my predecessors. It blew apart in the last couple winters, you know? So unfortunately, we have to pave that at a cost of, I think it was $200,000. So something has to get pushed. So I do hate creating false hopes, but we do, we do have a list of four years of what I hope to do with about $2 million every year. Again, it's fluid. It was fluid up until this fall, or actually this spring with, with Panone. You know, I was hoping to do Weber, but looking at the cost of Weber, we could get another almost neighborhood complete. So we, we do need to shift and, and move, move roads around as the budget allows to get the most bang for our buck. With the use of Violytics, again, we're still in the process of capturing the data. I think that will greatly help in budget season to kind of better forecast what roads need to be done. It, it is actually a really powerful software. I'm very impressed with it. So hopefully, as we get more roads captured and analyzed, we'll, we'll have a better, the, the board and the public will see a better perceptive of actually how our roads are doing and performing.
Thank you.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board to anybody?
No, I just, just note that Maureen was involved in review of the, the bid document that you're authorizing release of. We also engaged with Delaware Valley Insurance Trust to get some recommendations in terms of enhancement of insurance provisions as well. So the document is in, in good shape.
One quick question. Typically, we've done these like in February. Are we concerned at all about bidding and timing for the summer at all, or no?
So the thought process is the earlier you get out, you get better contractor prices? I could go 50/50 on that. Some feel that, some don't. I mean, contractors want work and they need work. So, and typically, the where we are in the county, we're usually last to get paved because they usually focus on PennDOT roads first, the contractors that bid our work. So usually, we're in that August pave cycle anyway. So I think we're, we're pushing it, but I don't think we're in panic mode yet. We were a little bit delayed just getting a professional engineer on board to help us through the process, but I think they laid out a pretty good schedule for us, got, got the work done fast, and I think we're, we're there. We're, we're, we're getting there.
I was going to note that roll-offs showed on Violytics as cobblestone.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there was a couple of sections it was, it was a little screwy with, but again, we're, we're working out the kinks, too. We're learning a couple of things with Violytics, and that's why we had more roads analyzed. We kind of got some bad data, so we, we have to go back and, and re-drive them. But it's, it's, again, Violytics, the intent of the software, it is fluid, so the more we drive it, the more it learns, and the actual, better it scores the roads. So it is one of those ongoing processes.
Is there any potential savings if we package this at all with, I know we're, the stuff over by Maple Vale and Highland and, and that area, where there's going to be some pavement, paving, maybe not the whole neighborhood, even though that neighborhood's a little beat up, but that first, what's in the plan, I think it's between.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of the culvert replacement, I would.
Different vendors, I would assume?
I would, I would shy away from that, and the only fact is you're kind of then tying two project schedules together, which could have not line up, and then you're looking at a potential mobilization or demobilization fee. So I would say, with the amount of paving that is needed for the culvert replacement, it's probably more cost efficient to just leave that there as part of that project. And again, speaking of, again, those, those roads, the rest of that neighborhood is on that four-year schedule that I have, but unfortunately, I couldn't tell you when that will, when it'll happen.
That's, that's perfectly fine. We're more concerned about the culvert than that.
Yeah, correct.
Obviously.
Yep.
All right. So we get a motion and a second. Any public comment? No one online? I'll call it the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we consider payment application number one, the amount of $282,836.93 from T. Schaefer Contractors for the Pine Grove Road and Big Oak Traffic Signal and ADA Improvements Project, partially funded through a $305,000, $320 Green Light Go Grant Program.
Second?
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the board? The, my usual one? I'll let you take a sip after saying all that, too. It's been completed to your, to your liking?
Yeah, so we actually, I, I was, I missed it Monday. So PennDOT did do their signal inspection. I think there was four items on the punch list, a missing bolt in a handhole. The engineer had to put the documents up on TSAMs and two other minor clerical items. So again, we still have retainage on the project with the contractor. We, we are satisfied. PennDOT was satisfied, yep.
All right.
Successful.
I'm satisfied with your answer, so thank you.
That's good.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Nothing online? Call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion also carries four to zero tonight.
Thank you, supervisors.
Thank you. Madam Solicitor?
Good evening, thank you. The minutes shall reflect that the Board of Supervisors, or the supervisors present this evening, did meet in executive session immediately prior to this Board of Supervisors meeting to discuss a real estate matter, employment issues, and litigation matters. In addition, if the supervisors are so inclined, they have agreed to meet an executive session immediately subsequent to this meeting to finish the discussion started this evening. And my report is short and sweet. It's just the fact that the supervisors have authorized, Kurt and Hevner, to attend on behalf of this township at a few zoning hearing board hearings that are scheduled for, I should have looked it up, I apologize. And I know there, I believe that's correct, on the 19th. And then I think we're before them again in June for another hearing that was already authorized for us to oppose. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisors reports, well, before we move on, any other questions for our solicitor on the board? Okay. Supervisor reports, on my end, emergency management. At one of our recent meetings, we appointed an emergency management leader. I think in the next few weeks or so, we'll look at scheduling our first, well, to bring the emergency management committee together to go over emergency management plans. That should be coming up pretty soon, and I'll report back on that. Planning Commission met and covered one item, the Wright Farm Development, which most, most folks are aware of. The, there were two recommendations that came out of that. The first was they recommended the approval of the Wright Farm Plan that was put forth as the, formally in the application. There were, that passed 3-0. They also had a second recommendation for the, and our solicitor can add to it if, if she needs to, based on how I say this, had a second recommendation to the board to have to have township staff work with the developer and their engineers, as well as PennDOT, to study the potential effectiveness of a right turn only coming out of the proposed development to the south, which would be immediately west of the Stony Hill Road intersection. That was part of an original motion that was retracted because it wasn't going to pass. And residents attending the meeting were very much not in favor of the right turn only, potential threat of litigation. I believe the applicant's engineer also was ... thought it was not a good idea, from an engineering perspective, to pursue that. But I felt the need to bring it before this board to provide formal direction to staff as that would require expenditure of funds. In addition, you know, on an alternative plan that was not recommended for approval, so that the applicant and staff and everyone else had clear direction as to what our next steps would be. Did I miss anything?
Yeah. The only thing that we clarify is that it really is... It's almost a two-step process. It's not this... It's not our staff, the developers, engineer, and PennDOT collaborating initially. It's really... It's if the township staff, especially in our engineer, review it and determine if it has any viability, then it would go to the developers, engineer, and then to PennDOT. So, if we don't find... If the township does not find it has... If it's not a good plan, so to speak, or if it's viable, then it really just stops at that point in time.
Okay. I would say after... Thank you. I would say after seeing the proposed option, hearing from members of the Planning Commission, hearing from the applicant, looking at it myself, hearing from residents, I would strongly oppose moving forward with this and proceed with the current application after... Which includes a lot of changes that have been recommended that from residents and others. I don't think that right turn only is at all viable. And I would recommend to the board, myself, to not move forward with it and make sure that staff is aware of that. I don't know how others feel.
Madam Solicitor, do we need a motion on that matter, or...
It was a recommendation from your Planning Commission. I don't think you need a motion. Maybe just consensus amongst the board.
I consents.
I just wanted to canvass the board to make sure that everyone had a...
I also consent in my canvassing.
Sounds good. Well, then, we'll provide that direction back to...
I meant to...
I didn't mean to preempt your consensus or consenting or whatever.
It was consensus.
We're happy to report that back to the applicant that... To not pursue that option as they're progressing through revisions to the plan and ultimately bringing the plan before you.
Yeah. And the only other item I would add on that is there's plus or minus 10 acres of some type of open space between the development and bypass. Both the EAC and the Planning Commission, after lots of back and forth, have recommended that that area be forested, generally. Now, there's some discussion about, should there be any passive open space or trails or anything like that? That's for us to decide, I guess. There's no real... There wasn't any clear recommendation there. One thing the applicant did say is they'd be willing to work with the EAC to develop, you know, a more robust planting plan, whether I even say a reforestation plan, which I think would be neat. But before they expend the time and energy, both the EAC and them, we'd want to give them a little direction, I think, as to how to move forward. So, I don't know if anyone has any initial thoughts on that, but it may allow the EAC to get involved more quickly on that end. I personally would like to see it refore... That particular area, refore... There's not a whole lot of access from the development to allow for a walking trail of some type, because it would go through private lots, from what I saw. And there's not a whole lot of opportunity for other types of recreation or passive open space, just from an access and safety perspective. So, a reforestation approach or planting approach does provide a really nice buffer, as well as... There's a lot of farmland in that area, so a lot of runoff comes into that part of the development or just south of the development. So, it also provides stormwater and habitat items. So, I'd be in favor of just reforesting the whole thing. I don't know if we want to give any direction or wait till they come before the board, but throw that out there.
I think at this point, you just wait before... When they come before you again for your approval.
Okay. That works for me.
But they can listen to this here, and it can be certainly relayed to them?
Yeah. And we, again, sort of like this right turn only thing, we don't want them to start making changes that... Where they expend money and get conflicting direction, which puts us at risk if people are doing that, right? So, probably if we want to wait till they come before the board, we can give that direction. Then they can go work with the EAC. It'll be cleaner.
Yes.
All right. That's it for me. Sorry for going so long. Supervisor Ross?
Yep. EAC meets on tomorrow. So, if anybody wants to attend that, they are eligible. The HRC had their first formal meeting last Wednesday, and tragically, I was unable to be there. I was stuck in Dallas-Fort Worth Airport, did not get home till 4:30 in the morning. But did allow me the time to watch the Planning Commission meeting. So, if you're stuck in the Dallas-Fort Worth Airport, you can always watch prior meetings if that's of interest to you. And those airline clubs always sound like such a good deal. Not that big a deal. Anyway, that's the net of my report.
All right. Supervisor Ross is not here this evening. Supervisor McCartney?
I have nothing to report.
And Supervisor Blundy?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you much. All right. Item 15 are discussion items. We don't often have stuff here. But we do have item 15A, which I will attribute to Supervisor Blundy's request. Would you like to say the name of this campaign?
Yes.
I won't do it, Dave, if you don't want to.
Yeah. No, you can't say no mow May. Thank you, Dan, and thank you to the other supervisors. I know it's late, so I'll try to tee up the topic early because it is a discussion item, trying to understand what the willingness of the board is and how we might move forward with it. But the concept of no mow May comes from an environmentalist in Europe, actually, I think England. And it's the idea that if you allow your grass to grow a little bit longer in May, it has really overwhelming benefits to our environment, because it allows some of the plants that are needed for beneficial insects and bees specifically to have nectar or food sources, I'll just say. It also allows some of the beneficials that haven't woken up yet a chance to stay a little bit warmer as the grass is a little bit, you know, provides them protection so that they can wake up in their natural cadence. So, it's really been gaining traction. I think it's something that I would like to see how we could move forward with. And just so you can have more fun with no mow May, that's no, mow, the month of May. There's also something called mow heken. And that is the concept of in no mow May, you don't have to let your whole lawn go unmowed. You could dedicate a portion of it. You could create stripes, meaning paths, so that if there's things you have to access, you don't have to be going through, like, thickets of grass or whatnot. But again, the idea of leaving a portion of your property undisturbed for the benefit of the environment. We do have some rules about things, so I wanted to bring it up and talk to people about how we could, if we were willing to, encourage this.
I appreciate that. And one thing I will say is that sometime last year, I believe, when we updated our property maintenance code, there was specific... Not discussion about no mow May, per se. I don't know if that rhymes. You're the poet on the board, not me. There... We do have it in our regulations, I believe. I'll look at our staff to corroborate this. There are stipulations in there that we added last year that allow for... Maybe it leans a little more mow heken than no mow May, however they say that. Apologies if I got that wrong. But I do think we have some room within our regs to do that. And obviously, I love pollinators. I'm the tree hugger, I guess. So, I understand what you're talking about. And maybe the way we're going, it might be no mow April. Doesn't sound as good.
So, I was trying to come up with trendy April things, but that doesn't do my accent justice. And it's even something that, you know, Derek could do, you know? We could mow less the properties that we have.
That is a great segue, because we do have this space naturalization program that we've been talking about for years that would be a perfect opportunity for township properties to do something similar. I'm sure then we all... The one piece of township land that I always think about, what are we doing with it, is that long stretch... Monica knows where I'm going with this, I bet. There's a long stretch of mowed land at Memorial Park, where it's just a big open field on a slope to east... Yeah, to the east of the tennis, pickleball, et cetera, that we probably spend a fair amount of time and money mowing. We've planted some trees there, but by no means reforested it. That that might be a great opportunity for a significant township property, I think. Trying to... Trying to work with residents for their own... I mean, township properties, I think, we can manage pretty well. I'm curious, some, like you said, some ideas for residential properties and how we could handle that, so we don't have residents calling on other neighbors who... One neighbor might like to see golf courses all the time, and another might want to do more of the English garden. So, we want to make sure we can understand that, so we don't have...
The intent is to help, you know, continue to build our community, right? And do that through so many different projects that work together. But it's certainly not to have, you know, people calling us and saying, "I'm living next to a jungle." But it's May. It's not no mow forever. So...
I appreciate. Although, my house, they might... I appreciate. Especially the dandelion. You know, you can use dandelions for everything. They... Some people actually like how they look, myself. Yeah, anyway.
I don't know. I mean, it is a discussion. So, I don't know if maybe, you know, I could start working with the staff to see what something might look like. Nothing else. If I say it again, maybe somebody listening won't mow their whole lawn, and it could be helpful. But whatever anyone thinks.
Just for you, I will leave a patch of my lawn unmowed.
Not even my birthday.
Just for you.
Thank you, Dan.
I commit to that.
Just as noted by the chair, there is some general language. Again, whether it achieves the full intent of no mow May, I'm not sure. But there... So, first of all, the property maintenance code that the township adopted and the international property code that it modified says that premises and exterior properties shall be maintained free of weeds or plant growth in excess of 10 inches in height, provided however that this height restriction does not apply to naturalized areas, riparian buffers, managed meadows, and other no mow zones as determined by the municipality. So, I guess I would turn to Maureen, maybe, in terms of whether that's sufficient, whether the Board of Supervisors needs to essentially put some sort of month-long stay on enforcement related to that provision? I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
But 10 inches, that's a lot of growth.
I... Yeah. I'm not an expert on grass growth, but...
I don't know what the advocacy relative to...
10 inches overnight. So, the perception of the length of some growth versus regular grass might throw people off, too. So, we got to see what that applies to, as I chase dandelions around my yard all day.
Yeah, it does say... I don't know if dandelion constitutes a noxious weed, but they're... No, they're...
They make a nice salad.
They do make a nice salad.
They do. So, to the chair's point, there is some flexibility in the existing modification of the International Property Maintenance Code that probably addresses sort of the balance, but at the same time encourages folks to consider this as an option for their own individual properties. And we're happy to put it out on, you know, if there's general consensus, we can publish via, you know, the township's website and social media channels. And that obviously would be really no required action from the Board of Supervisors, other than to say that...
The EAC always has an interest in something like that.
Yeah. And, you know, even if we can even just do it on some of the township lands for even the remainder of the month, that would be a good step forward for now, and then we can figure it out going forward.
A good test case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anything else on no mow May? All right. Other business, I think we have one item. So, we've... The board and staff have been trying to keep up to date on the energy transfer slash Shenoco Pipeline leak in... That is known about in Upper Makefield and is a concern for lower Makefield residents that live in close proximity to the identified leak. Not much new has occurred. There have been some meetings. There were some... It was on the news... There was a public meeting last night, I believe, that made the news. And it's, you know, the neighborhood where work is being done is experiencing a lot of difficulties right now, from what we see. So, we're looking, you know, one, keeping an eye on things for lower Makefield residents to see if anything is identified here. Also looking to see what different regulatory agencies are doing, whether it's the Pennsylvania DEP and their following up on forcing cleanup actions and other studies that are going to take many, many months, it looks like. And then also, what energy transfer is doing, the owner of the pipeline. And then as well, the Federal Pipeline Safety Agency that gets to tell the pipeline company whether or not they need... There are remedies that they need for the pipeline specifically, whereas the DEP is more about the cleanup in the surrounding areas and less about the pipeline itself. So, we're trying to keep abreast of that situation and trying to figure out what our board can do and our township can do to try and spur things along to the best of our ability on behalf of our residents. You know, I know other levels of government, our state reps, our federal rep, have written letters... Obviously, been attending meetings and been advocating strongly on behalf of residents. I believe there have been some letters written to the federal government agencies trying to get certain actions there. I'm not sure that that's how successful that's been, as the pipeline is still... Looks to be still pumping at 80% capacity of its full capacity, which does not mean it's an 20% reduction over what occurred during the leak. It's actually, from what I've heard, it's probably about the same. So, there's been no real change in function of the pipeline, while it's still being investigated for further leaks and continuous leaks, which is not something that makes me feel all warm and fuzzy. So, we're looking to see what our board could do.
So, Dan, I, you know, I appreciate that, you know, this is a pipeline that carries jet fuel from Philadelphia to Newark. And there's probably a lot of different agencies that have oversight to that. And at the same time, right, it passes through our town, and we do have rights and obligations to protect our town. So, can we model, can we look at an ordinance, and I'm making this up now, folks, so bear with me, that says, like, you know, if there's a structure that carries jet fuel under our ground, it has to be inspected every... We could say every 30 years, but beginning immediately with an inspection right now, to make sure there's no more areas leaking. Because that's what we don't know, right? What hasn't happened for the length of the pipeline is an inspection to make sure that there aren't other cracks or other areas of weakness. And that's what we're worried about. So, why don't... Can we consider asking the solicitor to take a stab at drafting something like that?
I'd be... Yeah. I'd be interested in that. You know, we have responsibilities to health, safety, and welfare of our residents. I'm sure we'll have issues of, you know, federal versus state versus local on these things. But that doesn't mean we can't do something, right?
Got to try.
Exactly. I'm up for trying anything. I'd also be curious about what we could do administratively with the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration. That's FIMSA. They're the ones that are dictating that this pipe is still active. Is there... I hate to use the word lawsuit, but it's... Or sue, but I'm not the attorney. But is there a way for us to try to compel them to officially to reduce capacity or basically do their jobs and protect the residents?
I don't really know. I don't know the answer, the exact answer to your question. We'll certainly look into that. But, you know, there has to be some tactics that we can use and some steps that we can take to ensure this.
Because obviously, our ordinance is one thing we could do, just to have a process that we're comfortable with, that we want to push, because we do have a couple pipelines, obviously, that go through the township currently. But we also, you know, there's one agency, really, that... we also, you know, there's one agency, really, that construction of pipelines is FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. That's something I've, I've worked on in the past. Operations of pipelines falls squarely on FIMSA, this Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration, so...
That sounds like it could be fun to say.
Yeah.
FIMSA.
Twenty times fast. So there are, and then the DEP is more around clean streams and if there's a leak, cleaning it up. They're, they don't have the authority to tell the pipeline to operate at a reduced capacity or change out this section of pipeline or shut down. The state DEP can't do that. That falls with FIMSA. It doesn't even fall with FERC, which is the entity that would approve a new pipeline, which is, you get, you're chasing the alphabet soup of federal agencies at this point. So I don't know, I'd be interested in a two-pronged attack, as it were, maybe, and then as we look at stuff, you know, it probably makes sense to talk to Upper Makefield, whether formally or informally, about what their interests are as well. I know their residents are doing something, but that's separate from, from the township, from what I understand. Anyway, not, not, oh, you know, talk about it too much, but it's just looking to do something, because right now, there's not a whole lot that we've been able to do, other than call them in front of us, and I don't think we got great answers, or have we gotten much in the way of responses since then.
So we'll look at both, both prongs, basically, an ordinance and direct conversation or contact with the regulatory or administrative agencies that have any type of jurisdiction.
Everyone okay with that? Appreciate it.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
I, that's it on number 16, unless anyone has any other, other, other business? No? Okay. Item 17, appointments to boards and commissions. We had one interview tonight, we have several openings. I'm not sure, are we, are we ready, or?
I mean, his face lit up when John said Harb.
Well, here's a question on Harb, because Harb has regulatory requirements in terms of professional certifications for certain seats. I'm not, I think we need, Mr. Marjuski usually has, knows this one off the top of his head, but I won't call you up in case you're still thinking about it. I know, I think we need a broker, necessarily, right? I know that's one of the folks we're missing. There can be an at-large, but I'm not sure if we already have the at-large person on the board.
Yeah, the requirements for Harb for membership, we need one real estate broker. You could have more than one, but at least one, one architect. I think we currently have three, and I think those are the two requirements.
How many? We don't have a broker at the moment, if memory serves. I feel like we've had that broker seat open for a while.
We've struggled to have brokers since one of the members moved over to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah. Is there any other, is there an at-large seat open?
Oh, and the other, the other item is, it must, a building inspector must be a member.
So Mike Kirk is, is...
So Mike Kirk, our building code official, is a member.
We have two, we have two vacancies right now. One is, one is the broker position and then another at-large, but we can take time to figure it out.
And the broker need not be a member of Lower Makefield, a resident, so the real estate broker can be from another town, who may just have an interest in preserving historic structures.
Is the requirement a real estate broker or a real estate agent?
Broker.
It's a broker?
It's actually broker. It's in our code, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, and I'll double check, but I believe that's in the National Historic Preservation Code, wherever this, the...
The base.
...generated from.
Yeah.
Okay. Darren, may lie your difficulty.
Yeah, and it's always been an issue, trying to get that, that one title on there. We have, I think, well, I know one person wasn't able to make it this evening. I think we'll probably have a couple, two, three interviews at each of the next several meetings, if all goes according to plan, so, I don't recall. I think there was someone that had an interest in Harb on there. So we might want to hold off, or we could just appoint one to the open spot, too. You want to hold off? Is that your thing? Okay. We don't want to hold off that long, because we want to get these boards filled, let's get through these, these interviews. All right. Item 18 is additional public comment on non-agenda items if needed. This is essentially the same as what do we have tonight, item six. So this is if you have public comment on non-agenda items, items that weren't discussed. If you do, again, please say your name, whether or not you're a township resident, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I'm seeing no public comment in the room. I don't see the red light on, so I'm assuming there's no public comment online. And with that, we'll move on to number, item number 19, which is adjournment. So I will say, happy May the 7th, and have a good night. Thank you.